Hi, this is the regular monthly meeting of the Dayton Economic Development Committee. I like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for broadcast on the Dayton YouTube channel and Dayton Cable TV. If you could all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item is just old business. I think most of people here are probably aware. We had three warrant items on the last town meeting. All three of them passed. Two of them were regarding relaxing rules on home-based businesses that we've worked with the planning board to move forward. Both of those passed. And one of them was a personal property tax exemption for small businesses that we had worked with the Board of Assessors on. So that passed. So that's great news, I think. Second item, and I don't know if we have an update or not, but on agricultural leasing and the the committee with what news we have from them.
We looked at the land that Paul had given us, and there isn't anything that really could be used for agriculture.
Okay, not even for animal or?
No, all too wet or just not worth it.
Okay, it would be too expensive to turn it into something usable. Okay. That's unfortunate, but I driven past a couple of them and I'd seen, you know, some of them, the challenges on a few of them, so. All right.
But I'm glad we tried.
Yeah, no, it was a great idea. And thank you Paul for pulling all that together. I know it was quite a bit of work, so.
No, my, my pleasure. And thank you for, both of you for doing so much of the legwork around it. I'm sorry that I wasn't able to push that harder.
No, no. New business budget review. So we do a new fiscal year. New budget for us this year is $900. We did not carry over any of the funds from last year, and one is we hadn't met since March, so we didn't have an opportunity to discuss it, but the other is, and I'll talk about this more when we get down to talking about marketing, is that what we had planned to use it for, we no longer need the money for, so. So we're just starting fresh with a new budget for $900. And if we have time tonight, I wanted to start thinking about what are our plans for the coming year? And maybe we can just tee it up and follow up more with a discussion next meeting if we don't have time. The next is new business opening since our last meeting. So I have four that I'm aware of. One is called The Late Anchor. It's a mobile coffee retailer and gift shop, so they do primarily catering and other things, mostly fine coffee based. The other is called Little Lemon Press, which does handcrafted cards and other paper crafts. I believe all of these are home-based. The next is A G G Services Inc., which does light hauling and trucking. He had reached out to me and actually added his name to our local business directory, so that's great. And the last one is Peaceful Soul Wellness. I'm not quite sure what business they end, but I did find a website, didn't specify Dayton, so it may be a bit of a chain, but they do a variety of coaching and wellness services for individuals and groups. So I'm guessing just from the name, that's what this is, but. So I did send all of those welcome cards with little information about us that we had done last year, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. The last thing is I have been working on updates to our webpage. That's the www.dightonbusiness.com. Reformatting a little bit, adding events, adding commercial property listings. I did design and format it so it looks a little bit better on a cellphone than it does on a PC because they wouldn't display identically, at least not with like Google Gmail browser or Edge or that sort of thing. So I kind of optimize it for cellphone, but oh, it's all the same information. But if you want to take a look at it and if you have any updates or feedback, that'd be great.
Absolutely, I'll check it out.
So for the events, we've got several companies that are listing their events out there. Lane Gardens, Under the Sun, Rougeau Farm, and North Country Auctions. And like we had decided before the event, it's not necessarily a Dayton event. It's a Dayton business, but the event could be someplace else. A farmer's market, something, an auction going on in another town, you know, that sort of thing, so. This is open to any Dayton business. Let's see. The next item is to discuss Review Act on Committee Marketing Efforts.
What about Quarterly Taunton Chamber of Commerce? Or am I even looking at the wrong agenda?
For this? Oh, okay. I must have cut it before I I posted it with the town, but that's fine. So this started, they've met twice now. The Chamber of Commerce has invited the Taunton Chamber of Commerce represents Taunton, Dayton, Berkeley, and Rainham. So they've indicted people from each of those towns. So I've been attending at the last one. Our town administrator was there. As well as the town administrator for Berkeley and a representative from a Rainham business group. We're all there. So we have another one coming up in July. And kind of just on the side, our new state rep has asked to join us at that next one. He represents Dayton and a little bit of Taunton, like southern half of Taunton. So he's going to be there, will have an opportunity to just talk with him about things going on at the state or things we'd like to have him help us with, so. If you have any, you know, things you'd like me to bring up with him, I can certainly do that.
If you could shake 25 or 30 million dollars worth of sewer for 138 in Winthrop Street, that would be great.
Okay, yeah, I can certainly include that. As far as the marketing. So we had set aside money at the end of last year that we could, we thought we could bring forward, put together with this year's money, would be on the low end, but enough for us to hire a marketing company to help us produce a video to try to attract business in town that we could distribute commercially, just put it on YouTube, send it in emails, that kind of thing. And then Chris Ready at one of our meetings, I guess in March, had suggested talking to the high school. So I wasn't aware, but the high school actually has a three-year marketing program for their students. So I did talk to the teacher there. I went up in April. I met the kids, gave a presentation to them. They were very excited about doing this. So, and there's no cost to us. So that's why, you know, carrying the money forward is no longer necessary. But they're going to help us put together a a video, and they're going all out. I mean, they're going to be, they're talking about doing focus groups and, you know, pulling in other people to help participate in it. With the idea that since it was April and they were coming up on the end of the school year, that they would start it this year with the juniors and seniors. Seniors would roll off and they graduate, they pick it up again in the fall with those juniors who are now seniors and a new junior class. And then carry it forward and probably taking them up to the end of winter, beginning of spring in order to complete it. But the kids are great. They asked wonderful questions. They were very animated about the whole project. I shared with them all of our stock video footage from the videography that we've done a couple of years ago. And kind of what we were thinking about, what we wanted, so. More to come on that. They'll probably ask us to come back and talk with them as they're making progress. So if anybody's interested in joining me when we do that, you know, I will let everybody know, so you can, you can participate in getting an update from them.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thanks for putting that together.
And then, just as an aside, we were talking about, I met somebody at the Taunton High School at a recent Chamber of Commerce meeting. And I was describing this to him, and he said, oh, that's wonderful. And by the way, if at the end of the project you need help editing, they have students and they would love to be involved in something like that, too. So I think we got ourselves covered in terms of the technical stills for pulling this off, so.
I love it.
Yeah. I've also been reaching out to both the local Chamber of Commerce, other Chamber of Commerce's, asking questions, looking for contacts in that kind of South Shore area of Greater Providence. I've been attending the Taunton's Chambers Networking Events. Just passing out, you know, information about our group, talking to people. That's how I met the guy from the Taunton Schools. I really think if, you know, one thing, it's to support local businesses, which is definitely something we want to continue to do. That only incrementally at best is going to help grow the commercial base. I think, and this is part of the video, too. We just have to get out there and start networking and advertising Dayton as a commercial location. I had talked a couple of years ago to some members of the board of selectmen saying, I would love to get to the point where we can advertise Dayton rolls out the red carpet for business and have it actually be a true statement. I don't think it's a true statement today. I would like that to be a true statement and we can actually advertise that, but I think, you know, some of the things that have been happening, like online permitting across to all the different committees, some changes that have been happening with both Concom and the planning board to kind of streamline the process and reduce costs by standardizing on, you know, one peer review engineer who kind of covers everything in one shot. It's cheaper for the applicant. It speeds things up for everybody else. Some work that's been going on with Stormwater to the same end. And some of these, you know, warrant articles we've been passing for, although they're focused on small business, you know, it just shows that the town does have an appetite for, you know, for, for growing its commercial base, so. If you know of groups that you think would be good to hit up for, that do networking, that we can now reach out to, that kind of help along these lines, just let me know. I'm trying to make myself available to attend more and more of those.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, no. It's kind of fun, too. So and I meet a lot of interesting people. So what else? So I did want to, and I think we talked about this in March, and talked about updating more Facebook postings, putting out more information about our group, and Chris had suggested, well, why don't we wait till after town meeting? See if those articles pass, and then if they do, kind of piggyback on that and start putting out, you know, new postings about what we've accomplished, how to, you know, for people who have questions about how to use those to their benefit, the new, the new articles that have passed, that sort of thing, so. I am looking to start sending out emails, start putting things on Facebook, start reminding people that we're here, you know, what we're doing, and explain some of the changes that have happened with those articles and, and that sort of thing, so. I'll start working on that in the coming weeks and just kind of keep it going. Ideally, I'd like to be putting something out there every two weeks. I don't know if I'll do that, but, you know, at least once a month have something new going out in email or Facebook, so.
I think once a month would be pretty funny, good. Yeah, and I'm sure that there's many businesses that didn't even realize what warrant articles passed or how it affects them.
No, yeah, no. I think I had mentioned a long time ago that the whole bit about relaxing restrictions on home-based articles came from a conversation I had with one person in town. That was kind of the genesis for it. So I tapped him on the shoulder right before this town meeting, and he was like, oh, those, I never go to those things, or to get there too aggravating. I was like, we might want to come to this one. This one has a lot to do with you personally, so. He did show up, so. So, yeah, so, so a little bit of advertising in our part would be good. And let's see, I've also been listing out on our events page, commercial property listings. So for a long time I had out there the Mill on Spring Street, 1712 site I have listed out there. The small convenience store next to Dunkin' Donuts is still available. So as commercial property becomes available in town, I'm trying to identify it and keep that list up to date for people to view.
And as an aside, do you happen to know when 1712 was built, that, that building?
The building? I don't, I don't know if it had a previous occupant. The restaurant was like eight years old, ten years? The restaurant opened just before Raphael and I moved to town, so I'm guessing eight to nine years ago the restaurant opened, 1712. But I don't know if there was a previous occupant in that building.
There used to be a restaurant called Giorgio's at one point.
So I don't know. And to be honest, those, the people that ran Giorgio's are still the owners of the property. They leased it just but I don't know if old Giorgio's is, or if they're the ones who built the building. Do you?
I feel like it, I, I thought I read someplace that it actually had a different name when I was younger.
So the building's been there for quite a while?
Oh, yeah. I used to walk from my grandparents' place over there to get ice cream.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm old. It's been there for a while.
Oh, okay, all right. Why do you ask Paul?
Yeah, the, the reason I asked is it was just kicking around. So now that, um, the agricultural lease program is, is kind of temporarily, well, but for the time being is a stall, a stalled lead anyway. I'm just trying to think about what some of the other areas that represent possibilities for economic development are. And I know that you said earlier in the meeting that you wanted to talk about some of the other opportunities that we could identify. I don't know if you, if this is a good segue, or if I should okay, perfect. So I was thinking about, the two things that I was thinking about were various different tax incentive arrangements and/or is there separate kind of separate paths? Then the other one is Chapter 43D for the expedited development for remediation of contaminated areas. And I was just thinking about if 1712 were old enough to qualify for anything under CPC? If that's something that could be kind of considered, and if CPC could maybe have an opportunity to weigh in, if there is, if there does end up, because I, I would hate to see you know, a Dayton business that's been there for a long time kind of fall into disuse and disrepair and you know, the, the longer a building goes unmaintained or unoccupied for, you know, the more lengthy of a process it's going to be, which increases the chances that it won't be developed. And I'm just trying to think about what, what levers do we have where we can kind of create an incentive to revitalize and restore these properties? So that was just where my mind was, was if there was some, say you have a prospective buyer that goes in and sees that it needs X, Y, and Z upgrades, it's going to make it untenable. I almost wonder if it would behoove the town to want to kind of participate from one of those revenue streams, be it CPA or something, something like that, that would allow us to kind of inject some money in and, and get things going again. It, it's not quite a thought yet. It's more of a seed, I guess. I was just, what, what stuck my ears, we were talking about it.
Well, the building would have to be historical for the CPC to be able to do anything. So obviously, that's why you're asking how old it is. We have to do a little bit of research on that. And the funds from the CPC can only be used for rehabilitation, so meaning.
Oh, right, right. So if there was substantial renovation or upgrades, that would, that would be inherently non-historical. So I guess I've kind of answered, ended my own line of
I mean, tax incentive arrangements, the town does have a TIF committee, which I think Ralph is the primary contact on, or maybe you are as the treasurer. And technically, I'm on the TIF committee, but it has never met tax incentive financing. So it's kind of a, you know, if you agree to come, we'll reduce your taxes for X number of years to help you make it easier for you to get started, and then that expires, but, but the idea that you know, it's a way to attract new businesses because it reduces those upfront costs for them.
That's a very good incentive.
Yeah. I don't think the town's done one since, I heard the last time it did, it was when Dayton Power came to town. I don't even know how old that is, but that's the last time it was ever used. So yeah, I believe the applicant has to apply for it, or at least get into discussions with the town, so. There would have to be somebody who's interested in the property, who's willing to apply for it, probably talk with Ralph about, you know, what they're looking to do and that sort of thing, but. But yeah, that's definitely an avenue that the town has for, you know, for pulling people in.
Yeah, I almost even wonder about 620 Spring Street, because that, that part, property is a tax title property. I don't off, off the top of my head have the delinquent tax balance, but it's, it's substantial. It's above a quarter of a million dollars in delinquent taxes. And, you know, the, the town will have to be paid that back at, at settlement. But I almost wonder if just, you know, functionally in the same way, if the town were to reach some kind of tech, you know, some, some kind of TIF arrangement with somebody who wanted to develop it for commercial purposes, if there would be a way to kind of apply that money that would be due or a portion of it back into some sort of, you know, upgrade or something like that. I'm just thinking that that, that might be a lever possibly available to the town.
No, I think it absolutely would be, yeah. I, I don't have any inside information about what is needed in there. I, I've walked inside the building before, and it's pretty much just an actory empty factory shell, just no huge ceilings with no interior walls and except a few that have been thrown up for storage purposes. But I've, you know, heard different things about the condition of the building and repairs that are needed, but I don't actually know anything. But yeah, if there was somebody that came forward, you know, it certainly, you know, they'd approach the town about that, or the town would be willing to do that. I guess we'll get to talk some more with Ralph and get like some details about how do you let that be known? I mean, you don't want to I don't want to say tip your hand because it's, but it's a kind of a negotiation, I understand, so. You don't want to be giving away the store, but you want to help people, so. I don't know, the next time you see Ralph, or when I see him, the next time I'll ask him about how would we make this known, or how, you know, if people are coming forward interested, how do we, you know, who would be the best person to approach them about it? That sort of thing. Um, there's, yeah. And that property is zoned industrial, which I think is one of the can be one of the turnoffs for people, because as a retail, like basic business, it may have more options. But the, you know, that would be a discussion with who's ever, you know, interested in it, what they, what they would like to do, and talking to the town and see if they'd be willing to maybe adjust the zoning up there, put in an overlay or something to that would make it more flexible for other types of businesses.
Right, that makes, makes sense to me.
In terms of the Chapter 43D, I mean, Zeneca was before the Board of Selectmen not too long ago talking about the dam, talking about their long-term cleanup efforts. They didn't make it, or at least they didn't bring up the idea that anything up there is in a condition where they could start repurposing it for profit on their end or for sale to somebody who could use it, so. I don't really know about the 43D. Is that a a state level, or is that federal? Is it that you give other funds attached to it, or it's a tax incentive?
I believe that it is state level. Let me just see if I can find it real quick. Yeah, Chapter 43D. Yep, so it's a state level. It looks like it's got a local acceptance that would be done yeah, by, by, so it's a local bylaw to accept it. And Section 3, it looks like it deals with the formal proposal for designation as a priority development site, and then the availability of technical assistance grants. I'm just, I'm just reading real fast off the Mass Legislature website.
But it's along the same lines. It's reduced taxes in exchange for developing the site.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, all right.
The amount of any single grant awarded from the fund, which I haven't read very much about what the, what constitutes the fund or how it's funded, but should not exceed $150,000, it looks like is the, the cap.
Yeah, definitely. Are there other properties besides Zeneca that fall on, well, technically, Hill Street? I'm sorry, Spring Street, the mill there is also contaminated.
Right, that, that's what I was thinking. I believe there's a portion of that site that would fall under it. Because I haven't seen it completely. I've just heard that anecdotally for, you know, for, for years, that there's a portion of it that would fall under that.
And yeah, because of dumping that was done up there, you could never tear that building down and put up another one. The moment you tore it down, you'd be prohibited from putting anything, anything up unless you cleaned it, the site. Same thing with the parking lots on either side. You can't drill into those layer, anything on top of them, you know, that's going to disturb them because it's all contaminated, so. It's fine if it's the building as is, but once you start any heavy remodeling, anything that's going to disturb the soil is probably a no-go. Unless you're mediated, yeah. The other thing, and we can push this to our next discussion, maybe we have more people here, but we have been talking about business networking. And last year, we talked about doing it on kind of a larger scale, like breakfast for business owners on a Saturday morning and getting sponsors and that sort of thing. I don't know if we wanted to talk about doing on a small scale and see how successful it is, just like coffee and bagels, you know, and see if we get many people show up at all, you know, before we try to, we could still, you know, entertain the idea of using sponsors, but, you know, the cost becomes much less if we do that. So I'm just going to throw that out there for people to think about, to see if that's something we want to do this year, and if it, we do it once and it's, we get a good turnout, then maybe we could try to do it throughout the year.
Are you?
Build upon it.
Is this just networking? Are you planning on having like a presenter?
Yeah, we talked, when we talked to this for you, it said it might be more attractive with a presenter, right? So, and the other thing is not just for Titan businesses, but anybody interested in doing business in Titans. You're in Taunton, but you've been looking at a piece of property in Titan you could come to. When you talk about presenters, would it be more people who are, can give information about business processes and resources? Is it more legislative? I'm just thinking, what would be attractive to people?
Could be both. I mean, I'm sure we could get Senator Duner and Representative Thurber to talk about what they can do for businesses, their districts.
I just wonder if we did something like that, would it stay as a business networking event, or is it now like a public forum for people with? Not that it's bad. I mean, it advertises us, but it could easily go into something much broader than like a business networking and, you know, gathering, but no matter how you advertise it, but.
You could do, keep it networking, but have somebody there that not, doesn't necessarily have to present, but
A moderator.
Like we'll just get up and talk about what they can do for businesses.
For business, okay. So I don't have any particular, you know, plans or any suggestions around that, but that's something I can get more information about and. And we have our legislators, we have SCORE, we have the chamber, we have other resources. The state level that offer a small business, you know, help, so. I can start calling around and seeing who would be willing to, to do that.
Yeah, I was thinking, I just, my thought just left me though, shoot. Just thinking, issues I deal with, like. Could be like leadership, like, you know, managing people or finding people, that's my biggest problem. Finding staff, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I'll, I'll circle back at the next meeting, I'll, I'll press the chew on it a little bit, to be honest.
Okay. Any announcements, anything going on at CMAT or?
We have a lot going on, but I have not keeping up on.
Okay.
I'm short-staffed and all I do is work, I don't get to read my email.
No correspondence, though I did have somebody approach me after the last town meeting who's, may show up at our next meeting. He's interested in changing the restrictions on the size of signs. For home-based business, because right now they're pretty small.
Okay.
So, I mean, he's welcome to come here and talk, I just thought we'd just do it under public input. It would actually be more for the planning board. And, but you know, but we can listen to him and see what our suggestions are and maybe help move that forward if it sounds something like we want to support or not. So I did send out meeting minutes for November twenty-fifth, January twenty-seventh and March third. We didn't have an April or May meeting, I don't know if people have had an opportunity to review those, or someone would like to make a motion to accept them.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Alright, all in favor?
I.
I, I.
Okay. Meeting's over, and I'm sorry, I should have stated this at the very beginning of the meeting, I forgot to. We do have two members who are joining us from Zoom, Raphael Delph and then Paul Reynolds. If we stick with Monday at this time, our next meeting date would be July twenty-eighth at 6:00 PM. Paul wanted to bring up the idea of changing our days away from Mondays because of scheduling conflicts. Which I'm fine with. Due to how busy this room gets for meetings, it may mean us moving all or primarily towards a Zoom-only meeting. There's nothing wrong with that, you know, our meetings could be Zoom-only, you know, for foreseeable future. But. Does any, first, does anybody have any objection to that, if we were to change it away from Mondays?
I don't have any.
No, okay. Paul, what works best for you right now, I know you're involved in a lot.
For, for me personally, Tuesdays and Wednesdays are typically my best days personally.
This time is good, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, this time is fine, six o'clock is great.
Okay.
Tuesdays, I'm at Bristol Aggie or I also have ag commission.
Ag commission, okay, what about Wednesdays around 6:00 PM, particularly if it was Zoom?
That's fine.
I'll inquire about getting the meeting. Uh, I imagine Wednesday at 6:00 PM, we're going to conflict with. Plan, I mean, planning or selectman or somebody, so.
If it's easier, Dan. If you'd like, I can check in with Laura, because I know she's adopting kind of summer hours so that she can work basically every Saturday throughout the summer.
Okay.
She may very well have a designated weekday off, I think right now they're kind of floating her, but she may very well end up having a designated. Weekday off. So if, if you'd like, so nobody has to, you know, check their schedules or go through things or commit to anything right now, if you'd like, we could circle back to, in the, uh, next month.
Okay, so for right now, we'll just keep it July twenty-eighth at 6:00 PM. And we can talk more about changing that and I'll get more information from Leanne about what dates, what regular days of the month, you know, here or prime time are available for us.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
So I didn't have anything else to bring up, I don't know if anybody has anything else they'd like to, to raise.
No.
No? Somebody like to make a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
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 All those in favor?
I.
I, alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Bye.